Okay, welcome everybody to the town board session Tuesday, February thirteenth two thousand eighteen. First in our agenda, we're gonna talk about wayfinding signs for downtown. But the infrastructure and streetscape project, we have our liaison.
After all these years, you still can't say them.
Really can't, right? So I try to make it sound Frenchy to make it. The mask, in fact, I really can't pronounce. That embrace, embrace. So, alright, what are we doing here? So Jill sent a really nice, uh, do we have that printed out here?
The um Empire State one, no, I didn't put it out, but I sent the link to everybody, it's sort of. So the um the Empire State Trail that is connecting. Bob, how far is it going? It's like all the way upstate down to Long Island, you're gonna be able to bicycle ride and.
Well, yeah.
The entire state, it's gonna be fabulous. And so then our North County, South County Trail is all gonna be part of it. And as they come through town, they will be contacting us to see what kind of uh information we would want on the wayfinding signs. But what I forwarded to everybody was their design standards. Um and it's really pretty cool, so it's got an insignia of the map of New York State on it. Um and they actually created design standards. So, which is gorgeous. And the question is, you know, clearly ours is a much smaller version of that, but. But it gives you the idea of, you know, what standardized signage would look like, the whole idea of us um having a brand.
Right.
Um and whether or not this is something that the board wants to take and explore as part of our streetscape and you know sort of. Sort of in- intertwine the different sections of our community and uniformly label it, you know, map it.
Right, so as part of the streetscape project, um what was kicked around originally, but we never really got there, was the two. And Sabrina was involved and and it was to, um the real. The way the downtown is laid out, the real issues with the downtown, some people can't find the train station, people can't find parking, people can't find the library, the historical society. And so we wanted to have standard wayfinding signs to help pedestrians and cars find the uh you know the 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 different buildings downtown. And then also was a branding opportunity. So at one point we were kicking around the idea, although we never really got there. To use the Chappaqua sign that's in the triangle with the guy who's cutting the woman's head off from the rock. It's like our logo and then putting that on all of the uh all of the different signs throughout downtown.
Yes.
And so I and so we were kicking that around at one point, but that never, we never really.
Right, we tried the the letters, the stylized letters, and Gray Williams didn't even know what it.
Right, of Chappaqua. Right, we we.
Didn't even ring a bell to him, no nothing, yeah, so I don't know.
Right, right, so so we kind of we we kind of fleshed it out a little bit, but now's the opportunity because. You know, with with the with the path and all these things, it's it's something that's sorely needed downtown and and it should match the aesthetic of the of the streetscape, so we now has the time to look at.
And I've what I've said, but it's 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 important is the sign outside Chappaqua Crossing, which basically says business district this way.
Sure.
Yes.
Which I think is critically important there.
And signs to Millwood and just, you know, just basically pulling the community together, having a nice brand that sort of, you know, you know where you are.
Right. And to take it to the next level, and this is really the next level. There are, you know, there the the whole community Newcastle in general, there are. Some signs throughout the town that show when you're entering the town of Newcastle, the different boundaries throughout the perimeter of the of the town of Newcastle, but some of them are missing and. Some of them just aren't there. And so if we really wanted to take it to the next level and have like branding when you enter the town of Newcastle at all the main arteries throughout town. And then it gives people, because people don't know what Newcastle is in many instances, as we all know. And so it it delineates the boundaries of the town in general and might, you know, be another branding opportunity. And I think that was done historically, but I think they kind of went missing and broken and some of them exist and some of them don't. So that might be another fit.
And they've got requests here. Oh, they're cheap.
Yeah. So we did.
Well, they're not, they don't conform, they're not conforming too.
They did this like New Englandy kind of thing, but.
Oh, no, they're standard signs and.
So, so um where does the budget for this come from?
There is no, as far as I know, there was no budget.
So so wayfinding um is an item that was identified in the comprehensive plan. The there there is monies for implementation of the comprehensive plan that was put into the budget this year. The, you know, Adam talks of, you know, the gamut of signs just for down to directional signage for downtown versus. Branding of the entire town and identification of the entire community through signage and branding. So we're talking various levels of wayfinding processes. The Empire State Trailway that Jill had sent around was done by Alta Design and Planning. They have a wayfinding specialty. Where they will run programs where they work with the community, they'll design different types of signs, you know, have community feedback about those signs. They'll identify what the message is of the community. So it really depends on where you wanna take the wayfinding. You know, do you wanna start out with kind of doing the community outreach branding? Or do you guys have a good sense of what you would like to see and kind of start with directional signs? I'm not sure, um but all of that has a different dollar amount attached to it and I don't know.
Any idea in terms of.
I don't think we want the.
General numbers?
Well, and before you answer that even, wasn't Chappaqua Crossing, why aren't they required, Summit Greenfield to put some wayfinding signs in as well?
At Summit Greenfield, they will direct folks to downtown. I don't know that they will put a sign downtown directing.
I mean, I think the big thing that needs to happen there is there needs to be a sign that shows where Chappaqua is, because.
Well, yeah, it must be one in there.
Yeah, there there are, there is permanent signing that was approved as part of that development plan.
That show the business district is and.
That show, well, that shows like, you know, downtown Chappaqua this way type of thing, but it's not what you guys are referring to. As a brand for the community or wayfinding in town to direct people when they are downtown or how to get downtown and what is downtown.
Right, because when you come to town, if you're not from Chappaqua or Newcastle, you don't know, like you don't know the parking lots behind the stores over here, you don't know there's a parking lot behind Starbucks. You don't know there's the connection points next to the nail salon and the connection point next to the picture framing shop. I mean, there's no, you know, if you're, so that's the idea.
I think it's a good idea, but I I wanna know dollars because maybe we do downtown, Millwood and Chappaqua and then. Across that bridge of the 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 borders at a different time. I mean, I just.
I'm just putting it out there, I don't disagree, I disagree.
Right, I just heard, I I.
Right, and they're staging it and and I.
What does this cost, so?
There have been programs for eighteen thousand dollars, which includes, you know, actually putting up signs versus, you know, thirty and up depending on the size. And the scope of the program, you know, so it really depends, you know, ideally what what we look at unless you want to do this internally with staff. Is we do a a request for proposals based on a scope that you guys identify. Um you know, we'd have to talk a little bit about what kind of public process you're interested in, if any at all. And we'd see what we would get in regards to cost and different firms who would propose to you.
Well, I mean, this this conversation is great and I loved what Jill sent that uh was it called Alta?
Yeah, they did a beautiful job.
Alta Design.
Design did, I mean, that was an outstanding job that encompassed the whole state with the purpose of trail connection. Um, you know, finding the historical society for most people. Or finding, you know, the library, that's what GPS is for, if you're not in town. Um, so I think, you know, that is a basis for doing it. Soul in and of itself is not enough. But if what we wanna do is make it a larger project to give. Not just, you know, where, you know, where to find the library, where to find the community center, how to get to Chappaqua, which is a practical. You know, decision because it's relatively new, but we wanna go in and sort of create something that would be on our trail. So I think our town has more trails and more parks per capita than any town that I know of.
And they're hard to find.
And they are hard to find. The trailheads on our parks, I mean, if, you know, I mean, I've started to walk them all and they're really great, a lot of them.
That's actually way fine. Yeah.
Or if we wanna talk about, you know, biking and where it's good biking, if we wanna look at like places of historic note. That would give people a sense of history and the fact that they're grounded somewhere. I think if it, the scope just for finding the library and finding the parking lot. I think that's what GPS is for in the modern day. I think if it's something larger.
Well, that's not, actually, I think so, so so if we want our downtown to be pedestrian friendly. And allow people to, you know, have, you know, navigate the downtown by walking, I mean, they don't have GPS, so.
And a brand and branding purposes.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, and you see it throughout.
But I think we, I think we have to be really clear about whether it's a branding and marketing.
Should be both.
Or it's wayfinding.
It should be both.
I think it's both.
Well, way wayfind, there's different levels. It's wayfinding signage versus a wayfinding program.
It's both.
A wayfinding program includes the larger scope, the intent of the whole branding, whatnot. Wayfinding signage is the sign to direct you to a place.
Yeah, but the sign should be consistent throughout town. It should be consistent outside Chappaqua Crossing, it should be consistent with the trails, and it should be consistent with.
Right, I think.
I mean, you also don't want people walking around town with their phones, that's doing it with their phones, trying to say where is Chappaqua, right?
Find it, find it.
But if you go to like Ridgefield or you go to any of these other cute towns, you see something, the library this way or town hall or.
You know where it is.
It's not, we're trying. We're not. Exactly. Listen, we're never.
You know, it's it's cute.
But I think if if the scope is just limited to the downtown and the scope, I mean, Millwood doesn't need wayfinding signs, where's the Chico's?
We're trying to attract other towns also. It's not just us.
Okay, but it does for people that don't live here.
That's the Chico's, you you wanna be like.
Like, how do you find the train station? I mean, how many, they don't.
For the trail, how do you find the trailhead?
How do you find the trailhead?
The chases are always complaining that people can't find the restaurant, so, I mean, it's it's.
Well, I have a. That's right.
But it's not just for us, we know where to go, it's for out of towners. The goal is that maybe, shockingly, maybe one day out of towners come here because we have such an incredible selection of of.
I'm very open to it, it's one of our dollars, I'm open to it, how far we're going towards that, just one of our dollars, yeah.
Yeah. So. I think it would be amazing, but I think, you know, we also just discussed what our priorities are for the comprehensive plan for the coming year and this wasn't one of them. So I think if we're gonna add it to the list, we should understand how much it's gonna cost, all part of it.
Well, we definitely, definitely should, but the thing is, we're doing the streetscape now, so that we'd have to be done in conjunction.
Yeah, of course.
And it's a scheme of things.
Does it, but does it have to be done in conjunction with it?
Well, if you're doing the sidewalks with the signs.
They have to be mounted into the.
Yeah, but I mean, it could happen first quarter of the following year, once it's.
Yeah, but if you're doing the granite, you're right, but if you're doing the granite, it makes sense if you have.
Guys, in the scheme of, you know, eleven point six million dollars, we're buying six or ten signs, it's not like, I mean, I think we're.
Well, that, but the request to buy six or ten signs is not the request that's put here in front of us at this juncture.
We also don't need.
That's all I'm, that's all I'm requesting, I don't know.
We also don't need.
I just wanna know, I don't disagree with Adam, I just wanna know the the cost.
Okay, so how about this, I I think in order for us to figure out what it's going to cost, that we need to issue an RFP.
Yes.
And ideally, what what we'd like to do is put in some parameters that would allow us to either expand or contract. The actual scope of services depending upon the price tags that are attached, so that we can get the board to where they need to go. And also give us the opportunity in the future, if we wanna expand it out, when the Empire's Trail comes down. And identifies key spots in Millwood and in Chappaqua for us, allows us the opportunity to maybe integrate that with some of our own signage.
But what's your RFP for, the actual signs?
Well, no, it would be for the wayfinding program and signage.
The branding and the. It's covered with for design and recommend the design of signs.
So.
For the design, for the design.
Yes.
We don't have staff.
Well, it helps refine the scope of the project, 'cause I've heard one scope, I've heard two scopes, there's a third scope.
Right.
Is to define the scope, level the scope, so there's different um cost regarding approaches Jill mentioned. They will work on design, if you guys want a public outreach process, whether it's as simple as posting different selections on the web and having people vote in or you want public meetings.
Well, someone once painted a building and there were people up in arms, so I, you know, I don't want uh.
No, we have.
The sign to get people in arms.
Just go do polls.
But I don't know that we need big giant public meetings, I think it can be publicized that we put this on the website and vote for the ones like that or type thing.
Right, I I agree.
Right, and you guys have ideas in your mind and and so, you know, and I'm listening to them and we can create something.
And we can have the streetscape committee decide the aesthetics of it if you want.
Um, you know, and then it will also include, if you want them to include. What it would cost to actually produce the signage that you have selected.
Well, what is it, what's it, what's, might as well get the whole thing done and have them look at it, there's no extra cost to us to have them look at more options, is there in the RFP? It's a cause of talent.
Can they, can we ask them to separate the RFP by?
We have to create this RFP by.
I understand that, but.
In the RFP, we can ask for separate prices for each element.
Section.
Yeah.
That's, I think.
But I think we would need to know what the cost is, so and it, I don't know, not only for the streetscape committee, but also the architectural review board.
They're on the streetscape committee, they're the chair.
Okay, so they can also sort of weigh in.
That's what I.
But it's no cost to do the RFP.
Right, that's what I'm saying, someone else would get.
But I'd want to end at the same time.
No, the the cost is is time.
Okay. And then and then one other, you know, just another idea, to just to dovetail on that and to kind of what you were saying is that certain, when we visited other communities.
Yeah.
They had signs throughout downtown that showed, had little, you know, signs like this size that had little historic blurbs about that portion of the town. So, you know, there would be a sign mounted in front of the historic society that said, you know, Horace Greeley's house and, you know, whatever we could muster, you know, muster together.
But it doesn't even have to be antique history, it could be modern history.
Right, the most recent nail salon.
So we, right.
Oh, but.
The first nail salon in Chappaqua.
That's true, that's a possibility, yeah.
Right, but that's what, that's again, another element of the school.
But we can get, maybe get Gray Wilson, Gray Gray Williams to uh look at that and come up with a couple of things around town and then we can have.
So some of the historic um cemeteries would be wonderful for us to.
Yeah, no, they're cool.
Yeah.
He's in the fire department, the old fire department.
He's he's done a fabulous, have you seen his?
And building construction.
Cemetery course?
Yeah, once it gets, well, I think it's a cute idea, I just want this.
The cemetery course?
Yeah, this is what I think first we should do.
Gray Williams, oh, Gray Williams, yeah, I was talking to the cemetery committee, I haven't, I haven't given them ideas.
I think, I think we should, I know Jeremy's gonna mock me, but I think we should get, throw together a committee, it could be town board member, one or two town board members and some residents. Make, create a list of all the wayfinding signs, maybe it's for the entrance of town, maybe it's for Star Wars things, maybe it's for attractions, maybe it's for paths. Downtown, throw together a huge list. We don't need to buy anymore right now, then we can go out, we get, we can also get together some marketing people, come up with some suggestions for marketing. Then we can go out to the RFP, get some prices, and we don't have to buy them all now, we can just buy the ones for downtown right now. But at least we could identify the locations where we're gonna need them, the design, the 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 brand, the branding.
Branding, yeah.
Is there no, is there no more efficient way than that, to create a committee? That's not mocking.
And then we can buy the ones for downtown. Well, it's not, it, we don't need to formally create a committee, but you get like five or six people, whatever it is, working on it.
Time to tell your people, people.
Get somebody from the chamber, maybe.
You just get a bunch of people to brainstorm and think about, right, you get a whole mix of people.
Get Gray.
Right.
It doesn't need.
Alright, okay.
I'm not saying it's formal committee.
You have a couple of meetings.
But you get some people together, instead of just us doing this around this table, like they sit down and they come up with a list.
So can the streetscape committee kind of do it with, you know, pulling in some of these other people?
Sure. I could talk.
It's at least a place to start.
You get Gray Williams, you get the chamber involved, you get uh some people who know what the Hala knows all the trails and stuff like that. And then you, you know, you want it to be, I would bike, I'm I'm sure you do too.
Absolutely. Still getting help, working on.
So, so just to kind of clarify, what are you looking for in proposal for?
I think what we're saying is, we have to do a little more homework first, to kind of give you a sense of.
What you want your proposal to be about, okay.
There you go.
Exactly.
But we need to do it more efficiently than having a formal committee.
It doesn't have to be a formal committee. And yeah, no, no magnets, no carburetors.
But I think ultimately we'd like a large scope RFP and then we can always and have them give separate prices for each element.
I'm hearing conflict right now.
We're just not ready to do the RFP yet.
I I I understand that and and so wherever you end up at the end of the day, we can write the RFP for whatever scope you would like. What I'm hearing is you want a committee or a group of people to discuss.
I don't wanna, I don't want a committee, I I don't wanna call it a committee.
I hear there is a group of people who are gonna discuss what you want signage for right now.
An unofficial gathering of people.
Yeah, but that's only one small.
All I want is, all I, all I want is that six.
I don't know enough about where our signs are in downtown.
Part of it, it's not, it's not.
Adam, can you do me a favor, since this is, I mean, can you just write down the six or ten signs you want for the downtown?
Anything for you, Paula.
Yeah, sure.
Let's just like start there.
It's it's not even, it's like, not even, it's not even signs, I just, the the landmarks.
Let's keep it small and. That's fine, if you just have those six or ten things and that's the beginning, then the.
Committee of one. You got it.
And then we can build up from there.
Mark, sure.
But that's different from the RFP, the RFP is talking about, we still need to get the design.
His six or ten signs are driving this whole process.
No, 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 but that's. Right, but the six or ten signs are not gonna be just done on their own, we have to, that's where we have to get the design.
So.
And have somebody figure out what the branding is gonna be and what they look like.
Right, in the in the comprehensive plan.
But not, not a little bit.
And location.
Yeah.
Compre, the action in the comprehensive plan is to create a wayfinding program which included branding for the community. With particular emphasis on the important public places.
Right, and once we get the branding, we can say, okay, we ultimately would like these hundred signs or whatever it is, but we're gonna get six right now for the downtown.
There's really three things driving it.
Bring up later tomorrow.
And there's really, there's really three things driving it, just for the record, you got the, you got the Adam signs, you got the comprehensive plan, which is not, may not be a priority right now with the comprehensive plan.
That's what's with the Adam signs.
And the third thing is the thing that Jill said to us, because if they're doing this North County Trailway, they're asking us to identify our landmarks for the trailways. And that's part of why we got this discussion going. We have to do that, we have to get back to them with our answers for that.
So so going to the North County Trailway, which I absolutely adored that power, very professional PowerPoint presentation.
That's unbelievable.
Send it out, unbelievable. Um, and just chocolate block full of like, you know, it was just great. Um, the North County Trailway between the county and the state, do we know where that stands in terms of whether they're going to be keeping it or they're going to be leasing it to the county?
They're gonna be leasing it to the county, the county is going out to bond, I had a conversation with Dave DeLuca on last week. Uh, I was looking for money for our replica train station, I told him that we would love to work with him about reworking some of the parking. Um, that they were very interested in reworking down their circulation pattern. I told him that we were looking for, you know, three hundred thousand dollars and they're borrowing, it really would be a mere pittance, he told me that he was planning on borrowing. The construction estimates came out at three point eight million dollars.
Oh, for the whole trailway?
Yeah, no, let me, let me phrase this properly. That, yes, his engineer's estimate came out at three point eight, the construction estimates came out at eight point six.
Oh, to fix the trail.
So, yeah, so um he said to me, we have no money to uh to uh assist you with. And I said, oh, I said, that's a little bit more money, what do you think you're doing? He said, well, we're, you know, we have to rethink the whole, um.
Whole project at this point.
Yes, uh, they they need to repair what they need to repair. The problem is, is that there there are significant sections that have been undermined, that have to be rebuilt.
Right. Yeah.
The places in such a state of disrepair and, you know, you put it off and you can put it off, but the reality is sooner or later you have to take and fix the stuff and just stop the bleeding. Um, so I, uh. The long and the short of it is, is that they will be coming back to us to talk to us about, um, he he sent me um some informal pages. Just to sort of glance at and ask me not to take and, you know, release them generally. Um, because it hasn't been let out yet, but it's a very modest proposal about what's being done here, but he did tell us, did tell me that they would be contacting us regarding Millwood and Chappaqua. About wayfinding signs coming through here, um, I told him that we were very interested in having some of our parks be included. Um, he um, he was sort of lukewarm about that, which I was a little bit surprised about.
It's cost money to make those signs.
No, he said because it's like it didn't, you know, you can't bike to them. And I said, well, if you include them, it would be more of a reason, it's certainly consistent with our comp plan. And it would be more of a reason for New York State DOT to perhaps take another look at our ability to put some sidewalks or some connections to our parks, especially Kidney. Because it's so darn close and it would be such a, you know, fabulous connection point for it, anyway. Um, so, that's what.
Okay, so that whole thing about the money for the trailheads and they did that trailhead design that was included in that packet, is that gonna be state funded or is that gonna be county funded?
The county was going out to borrow, for it.
So maybe we should get clarification, 'cause it looked like the state actually was uh creating a uniform uh kind of layout.
I know it's for North County and.
Every five miles for the entrance to the trailways.
Yeah, um.
Five to eight miles, they said.
Yeah, I just don't know, um. I'm I'm not sure if that's in his borrowing or that's a state contribution, yeah.
Or the state, so that was my, so maybe we should look at that, because that would alleviate some of the costs, because the state would then take over in essence the parking lot and some of the other things.
Yeah, he didn't seem to think the state was taking that over, so I'm sort of curious.
Okay.
But, to be continued, okay, thanks.
Great, guys, enjoy.
That's it.
I got a question before you go, I'm sorry, um.
That's all I have, I'm sorry, not a town payroll anymore.
What what is the next big thing that's gonna hit downtown? And what is the landscape going forward, just so we can prepare people?
So actually Ivy and I had walked downtown and we have a, we we have a meeting this uh Friday.
I thought I'd put you on the spot just to get the information.
No, it's okay, please, please, put me on the spot. So, um, it's gonna get considerably worse before it gets better, I mean, that's the, that's the bad news. So, so the next, uh, once they finish the the sewer, uh, the uh, the the water lines are done now, they have to do stormwater. The sewer lines are actually located in front of all the buildings under the sidewalk. And the sewer lines unfortunately are eight to ten feet underground, so they're gonna have to excavate in front of every building along along downtown and remove the sidewalk. To an elevation of over ten feet, eight to ten feet. And so it's gonna be, um, and they're gonna put in temporary like bridging, so people can still access the stores and they're just gonna try to get that done in one fell swoop as quickly as possible.
Sure, I I know you're not.
I think that the worst is probably gonna be behind us, like from what I'm hearing now, and, you know, like as far as the digging and then they're gonna start doing curbing and from what I'm hearing, it's gonna be, you know, the curbing's gonna start going in in March and April. And once that, and once that happens, it's gonna be kind of a different type of pain, because the roads are gonna start getting rejiggered, because the curb lines are different and then. And so it's gonna be a different type of thing, but there's not gonna be these like huge ditches that are are constructed in the downtown.
And and then what about if you know the telephone, the poles and what what is all that?
So that's actually, that's one of the hot topics that we're discussing this, uh, that Ivy, this Friday at ten o'clock, so town staff.
This Friday.
Um, so, I guess what our focus has been is to try to focus on the things that are outside our control. And so the things that are outside our control are really two things at this point. One are the telephone poles, because, you know, that's a utility and we have to deal with Verizon and Con Ed and all the people. And so, um, we had town staff identify which poles uh are are gonna, which need to be, need to be relocated. The town has to sign off on that, which is one of the purposes of the meeting on Friday at ten, and Ivy's attending as well as myself and Bob and everybody's gonna be there. And then, and then, um, that that proposal's gonna go to the utility companies and then we're interfacing with them to try to get timelines on that. So that that hasn't been pinned down yet, but that's gonna be part of the work that starts in April and May and over over that period of time.
But eventually we'll have to get it done, because it's gonna hold us up, so they have to get it shorter.
Well, that's, because that's, that's why, that's why we're pushing.
Right, that's why, so so the idea is, is that first we need to be all on the same page as far as the relocation goes, there is, we know certainly. That there are sixteen telephone poles that have to be, utility poles that have to be relocated.
Right, 'cause you know, if you widen the sidewalk, then where the pole was previously would be in the middle of the sidewalk, so that pole has to be relocated.
So for ADA compliance, we just know they have to be shifted.
So then we then have to, as a town board or as a town, have to make sure that the residents and the businesses, businesses being key. Know in advance what's coming, so that they can take whatever precautions they can take and understand that. Unfortunately, well, fortunately, it's a means to an end, we're gonna get there, but.
And I think, I think that.
Take it ugly before it gets pretty.
And and I think that, you know, Rob and Ivy are are, not to put you guys on the spot, but it's my pleasure, are gonna be the one, along with Jill, are gonna be the ones who interface with the residents to to make that happen. And so, so and and work on the PR and the outreach.
Well, you just got slammed with that, God bless.
Yeah, so so this this meeting on, yeah, this meeting on Friday is really gonna be the last internal meeting before we start planning our outreach.
No, 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 but it's true, I mean, it's true.
Are you, are you?
Because one of the things that we absolutely positively needed to make sure is that we we were all on the same page as to where these utility poles had to be relocated. Because the last thing in the world I wanted there to be was there to be a difference of opinion when the poles were finally repositioned. We needed to make sure that everybody, we were crystal clear on this.
So we're gonna be advising the businesses, where they're going, what's going to happen, so again, but they need to have the like, the ability to accommodate.
Exactly, right.
Listen, every every business that we've identified downtown is getting a daily email. The two, they're also getting a two week look ahead, it's also my supervised report, every single thing is posted on the town website. It's also posted on Facebook. The truth is, is that now that Con Ed is is has left, you're hearing a lot less complaints. I mean, I don't wanna sound like, you know, passing the buck or blaming other people, but a lot of the complaints were caused from Con Ed, that's just the reality situation. And we'll see going forward that we're just not getting the same complaints, because Con Ed is done.
But I think what, yeah, I think I think what Jeremy's saying though is is.
And the time comes back.
With the poles, I understand.
It's giving you, it's giving you upheaval.
No, 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 just need to get out in front of it.
No, I understand, I understand, I understand.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it's, but it's, it's about the point, it's about the point that's in our control, it's in our control, but the Con Ed, the point I just left out when I was just saying that is that. Con Ed wasn't really in our control and that was very frustrating for us and for the residents, because we didn't know when they were coming, we didn't know what they were doing. This stuff at least is in our control.
Right, but we know, and we know, no.
But Jeremy, just to give you an idea of the scope, so like, 'cause I want, I don't want there to be any misunderstanding with the town board about how bad this is gonna be. Because like, I'm not, listen, I'm not sugarcoating it, okay? You know, when these poles are 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 removed, right, they're gonna have to, there are gonna be temporary trailers downtown with poles that take up many spots downtown, like while they're they're putting in the new telephone poles, you know. So can you imagine how long a telephone pole is, how many spots that takes up?
I'd like to see that, man, I would love to.
It's gonna be, and there's gonna be line crews downtown pulling new wire throughout the downtown, you know, and that's, you know, I mean, it's gonna be, it's downtown.
So, so it's.
Sideways are gonna be closed, parking spots are gonna be lost.
It's gonna be significant. But so 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 the, I guess, again, it's not, it's not so much.
Maybe when I finish it, not on top of that.
So can we get some signs made to just saying, you know, we're open for business, male or female, it's for.
Well, yeah, okay. Oh, but, I'm just trying to really like, yeah, yeah, and then on top of that, so don't forget, we are, we are removing sidewalk in front of the buildings in the entire downtown. And along with that, many of the parking spots are gonna go away, because this, once the sidewalks are gone, there's not gonna be a parking spot there either, so. It's good, like, we are entering like the, like, the bad, the really bad time, like between, between, you know, March, April, like these next two, three months are gonna be really bad.
Right, so I I think it's, it's not so much a two week look ahead, you know, what's gonna happen, Memorial Day, Labor Day, July fourth, you know, what are these?
By the time we get there, it's gonna be, we're gonna be really, we're gonna be good, but by the time we get to the summer, it's gonna be a different story.
It's before then.
You think, oh, by the time we start, you think it's gonna be.
Like my Memorial Day, you think a lot.
Well, so then what happens is, once that, once the sewer lines are in and the curbing is in, then the the last really painful thing, assuming the poles are all moved and they cooperate. The last painful thing is that we're starting the scratch coat paving throughout the downtown. And so there was a paving plan that we certainly provided to the town board, or they gave it since, two weeks ago, where they're paving in sections, because, you know, they have, there's old. Um, poured concrete slabs under the, under the, under the street now, I don't know if you knew that, and so those slabs have to be, they're like Swiss cheese now, they've been sliced and diced so much, those are gonna actually literally be, have to be removed. And then they're gonna put in a base coat and and put it in the scratch coat of paving.
I think people will be happy when they see the paving go ahead.
Yeah.
Right, once that goes, but it's gonna go in in sections, 'cause they can't close in time, that sounds like it's gonna be a section here and a section there, so, so that's plan, all that work.
Of course, of course.
Like by, once we get to August, then it's like, I think the worst is really behind us, then they're gonna start putting bricks down and street lamps and that's gonna be.
So it's a long haul between now and then.
Yeah, sure.
I mean, it's what it is, but.
Yeah, sure, but once we get to, once we get to the end of the summer, like, they're still gonna be working, but it's gonna be like, then it's gonna be starting to get pretty, you know, so it's gonna be a whole different thing, but we, the worst is ahead of us for sure.
We've, my my only point was, and I think it's worth repeating, we really have not had a problem with communication with this stuff in our control. And and like to your point, we're gonna be communicating this, we're gonna be warning people, the 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 problem was, a lot of the complaints were were Con Ed issues, because we did not have control of that. We didn't have control of the work, we didn't have control of the. Because we did not have control of that, we didn't have control of the work, we didn't have control of the of of the the warning people. Because they came and went as as they wanted and they did work wherever they wanted to do. We've been communicating, if you go to, if people go to the website, they'll see, we've been communicating about this stuff every step of the way.
Again, we're talking, we're not disagreeing, seeing big picture, knowledge is power for the business people and for our community, so it's just what's one month, two months, four months.
Yeah, but we. In our control. At least his point about the temporary banners and slabs, that's definitely one of the topics we can come around.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a schedule right now that's posted, what's not right now, it's been there for a while, but there's a schedule that shows the whole thing right till November, it's that's the schedule.
But it's actually meaningless in terms of the experience that you as an individual had when you're in downtown.
It's different from walking down.
Yeah, exactly.
That schedule is that gives no description, I mean, I look at it, it's kind of useless.
But you understand that it's gonna be so significant.
No, it's gonna, but it's all gonna be, we're gonna be telling it as it as we approach, I mean, I have an I update tonight of my supervisor report. And then when we do the polls, there'll be an update about that, we've been we've been doing this from the beginning, it's just been a Con Ed component that we haven't been doing, because it's.
But I do, I do think setting expectations in terms of what to expect between now is a great idea, any way we can do it is good.
Okay.
And I think your forthrightness is helpful.
I don't know, I don't know, it is what it is, I mean, we we we're here, we gotta get it done.
It is what it is.
Yeah, I think I heard that on Judge Judy.
Alright, guys. I create the problems, you guys have fun. You get to go home, alright.
Thank you.
Okay. Here we are again. So Ed, you wanna uh welcome Jennifer again and thank you for your work on this uh initiative.
Alright.
Sabrina, you can take it.
Sure, so um last time I was here, you folks wanted me to go back and speak with Felix and. Look at how we could use the town internally, so I asked Ike to come with me today to talk about um recreation programming. I did a memo uh to you, basically there's a timing issue we're running into. If we're going to acquire an electric vehicle, we need to um. Take title to that vehicle by May thirty first, working backwards as to how long it will produce, it will take to produce the vehicle. We need to submit a purchase order by the end of this month to the vendor in order to take advantage of New York State voucher uh funding. And which will enable us to not have to pay for this vehicle and to actually have a credit under the grant for LED replacement in the downtown. Um, with that said, um understanding that um. The discussion of working with Chapacqua Crossing may take a while from a legal perspective. Um, you know, we kind of set that aside and I worked with Ike to identify an in-town program for right now for seniors with potential expansion and Ike can speak to that. Um, to you to replace an existing vehicle that we use with an electric vehicle. So I I sent you a write-up on that um as to how that would work, um what senior programs it would impact. And we can talk to the additional programs that you may foresee in the future, but um what I'm really looking for tonight is for the town board to authorize us to enter into the um NYSERTA agreement. To purchase the electric bus for the senior programs for town hall or for the town. And then to authorize the um submission of a voucher or a purchase order to acquire the electric vehicle. That's what I'm looking for you for from you for tonight. I did have conversations with Summit Greenfield, they have allocated thirty thousand dollars to purchase a vehicle. And they have have allocated forty-five thousand dollars towards operation, so.
Each year, the driver.
Each each year.
Each year, for the driver insurance, maintenance, everything.
Including the driver.
The intention, if we were to partner with Summit Greenfield, is we would supply the bus, they would take care of everything else.
So we we believe that that forty-five thousand dollars annually will cover the full cost of the insurance, maintenance and operations of the vehicle.
Correct. Correct. Correct.
And we don't have to make that decision until later.
Well, legal is currently reviewing what arrangement we would need to protect ourselves to you know hold the public harmless. In an event that we would reach agreement and they're reviewing it, Ed, do you have any updates on that?
Insurance.
So 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 let me just make sure I understand, so we have the Ford Flex.
Yes.
Um, which would be taken out of service and replaced with this bus.
Yes.
At some point.
It's a van.
A van, a sixteen person van.
Shuttleman.
Um, at some point, once we need to make a decision whether to enter an agreement at Summit Greenfield. And we would then put the Ford Flex back in service for the senior program.
Yep.
Is that what the idea is?
Yeah. Yeah, the Ford Flex is the is the newer vehicle, so I'm sorry, I am interested in hearing Ed's answer to your question now.
It's a new car.
Right.
Uh, the the insurance, the maintenance, we have the basic terms, you have we have the thirty, we have the forty-five, we know how we're going to allocate responsibilities in terms of insurance and maintenance, so. Drafting that up is not particularly heavy lift, but the program piece.
Okay.
When is the shuttle going to be available to whom and who's gonna do all of that scheduling is to me the bigger unknown at this point.
Because it does sort of go back to, you know, it even though this is a hundred and thirty-five mile radius and it can be used at certain times during the day. Depending on on the charge, um. You know, I know we don't have to make the decision today, but I just wanna make sure I understand the point of view from the SAB, the SAB's goal is to reduce as many carbon.
Greenhouse gases.
Emissions gases as possible, which a shuttle bus would do more so than a senior activity bus.
That's right, what an electric shuttle for Chapacqua Crossing would do more than for the seniors, which is why we. Are strongly supportive of the Chapacqua Crossing route as opposed to the senior route, but I think this is more of a stopgap. To make sure that we get it bought, so that we don't lose.
Right.
Right.
But because they won't losing it, you're saying, you won't lose it, we'll lose those monies, so they don't have to pay.
That we will lose it.
So they don't need to pay.
Well, I don't know that we will lose the monies, we will lose the ability to pay for an electric shuttle, which will which is the.
Right. It's the tax credit.
The the voucher. There's a voucher that expires. And and out of all of the programs that we have looked at, the electric vehicle saves the most greenhouse gas emissions compared to any other project that we have identified.
And.
And and.
So we're at we're at the point where we have to make the decision, because we can't push it off at another point.
Correct.
Just to purchase, just to purchase, but now it's Summit Greenfield, what are we gonna say?
I was just gonna say, so I read in your memo, NYSERTA is aware of the.
Yes.
Yep.
Switch, the switch.
Potential switch, yeah.
Is Summit Greenfield al- also aware of the switch, so that if they get wind of the fact that we've applied for something for the town?
Yes. Yes.
They're not suddenly going to get weak knees and back out of agreement.
Yes, yes.
No, no, we 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 told everybody everything.
He has an obligation and and to be quite honest with you, Summit Greenfield has an obligation to start running their shuttle with occupancy of a cupola building, which is expected by the end of this month. So he needs to do a stopgap measure as well, because it's very difficult to access his site right now.
And by the way, I'm just gonna add, I know this sounds like semantics, but it's not just the SAB who's. Consistent with what the SAB wanted, I mean, we passed a resolution that said we're gonna abide by the Paris Accord and this is gonna help us abide by the Paris Accord. So I mean, that's a resolution this town board passed, well, maybe not, you know, but the point is, we're supposed to abide by it.
I'm fine with it.
And 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 the the grant contract requires us to operate this vehicle for a four-year period. So you know between, if it's not Summit Greenfield, do you wanna talk to some of the extra programs you're looking at?
I read them, they were fine, yeah, well, I wouldn't mind hearing Ike.
Okay, I like Ike.
Me like Ike.
I don't mind you standing here.
I dragged him here tonight, wasn't I?
Yeah, he's here.
I'm here, uh, so outside of some of the senior stuff that is mentioned in the report, um, we would also use this. Uh, this vehicle on any off days that we had for um. Kind of uh one-day programs for our teens and middle school kids, so day trips to anywhere and everywhere, um, that you know when they're off from school and things like that, allow us to. To run one-day programs, be able to take twelve to fourteen kids along with a couple of staff. To somewhere, you know, whether it's a Renegade team during the summer or down to New Rock City for the day or wherever, it just gives us another programming opportunity for that kind of. Middle school and you know early high school, what's that?
Get to the Renegades? Get the fish going back?
Uh, we gotta plug in somewhere up there, right?
Well, get it plugged in our first.
But what I'm just saying, you know, just.
We have sixteen able bodies to push us back, don't worry.
It's south coming back, right, so it's downhill six eighty-four. And because I believe, I don't believe you need a CBL for this vehicle, so it allows any of our staff to. The free, you know, the the freedom to take it and and for these programs, so just another useful.
Is that a difference from the bus?
Alright, so right now, we just have to.
Do the bus require a special.
Approve the purchase, likely, decided as well.
Yeah, CBL.
Oh, that's interesting, oh, that's good.
Yeah, no, it's actually better.
I don't know if it's a grant, I don't know if it's a credit, so I I was a parent too.
Yeah.
You have you have the.
And we're okay with being stopped, yeah.
They're good.
Sabrina, we're good.
You're good?
Yeah, all good.
Perfect, okay.
Awesome.
Do do we, do we need a resolution or something that the board's going to approve, you she does, she needs to.
You need motion to. I do, I I need a resolution in support of authorization for the supervisor to sign the grant contract when it's approved.
Do they give you a little point for that?
No, they do not, um, and I also need a an authorization to submit a purchase order to Zenith Motors for the quote as attached to my memo.
Yeah, I don't know any more resolution.
So moved.
But well, however, council, council.
I don't think we do it.
You could do it, so moved works or.
Oh, really, right now, I was just joking, alright, so moved.
Good, yeah, good.
Second.
Well, favor?
Aye, aye.
Alright.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
You you can write that out, right, you got you got that, you know.
No, that's not Max, Max, you got this.
You got it?
Correct.
Good, alright, you got it. Alright, you can do that.
Okay, thank you, Ken.
Alright, good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, Sabrina, you're still here, right?
Yeah, you still want me to stay?
Yes, okay, um.
Here to answer all your questions.
Well, really, well, sorry, Con Ed, so the.
Hate the need.
But the 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 multi-use pedestrian trailway revisited.
I brought green.
Alright, that's a bad name.
What page do I miss yourself?
It's Sabrina's um.
Oh, I guess not that big, huge, nasty.
The big twelve?
No, you don't, because it's two proposals, so Sabrina, we we went through our um our our files and our old emails and.
As well.
Um, Sabrina realized that back in October twenty seventeen fifteen, with Bob, thank you so much.
With Bob's help.
Um, that we had already issued um an RFP for um. Engineering um design for to help us with the this rail sort of rail trail sort of thing behind uh the high school. And running through to um Chestnut Oaks before we ended up with a ten million dollar estimate from the county to go exclusively through the wetlands. And so um.
Avoiding people's property, avoiding for properties, exactly right.
Um, so we thought that we would talk about it in terms of whether or not this is something that the board wanted to. Reconsider discussing, um, taking a look at the proposals that had been given to us. Um, the engineering estimates were between three sixty and two seventy, um, a couple of years ago, you'd have to add fifty percent to them, but the original um estimates came in. About three million dollars.
Two to three million.
Two to three, what we basically just got, what we figured to be engineering costs divided about by twenty, twenty-two dollars.
Yeah, for construction costs.
We didn't really get good estimates at all, I'd like to see how the county came up with ten million.
And this this again, this.
Wait, I'm sorry, go ahead, you asked first.
There's a couple, there's a couple of foundational questions first.
We didn't review the county numbers.
Number one, is the assumption that we're going to be putting one point five million dollars into that, number one, number two. I think what we've discussed in this email is we want to be adding. And extending our sidewalks and finishing downtown, we have to find dollars for that. Um, I I think the idea of a walkable. A walkable trail is certainly beneficial to the town, but at three million dollars already, you're potentially talking, where's that money coming from? And are the neighbors who live there, are they going to be on board again, are we gonna have the same issues, so almost like we're putting the cart before the horse.
No, 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 well, well, we.
I think it's, I think the the concept is a is a good concept, but.
Well, so the concept is that, part of the problem is is that there there are dollars out there for walkable paths and safe paths to school, things like that. So there's tap monies, there are greenway uh dollars out there.
You already, but I just interject, they already sent everybody an email, Kelly Murphy and Buck was off officer, put us on notice of one popular grant.
Right, and and part of the problem is in order to apply for those monies and and have a um realistic chance of obtaining them. We need to put a couple of dollars into actually preparing conceptual plans, and so unfortunately you have to spend a little money to be able to apply and be a a viable candidate for those funds. So the question is, is if if the board believes that in light of our expand, our proposed expansion of the downtown sidewalks. Which if we go from Maple to Bischof leads us to the foot of Chestnut Oaks.
Chestnut Oaks, right.
Which we then have a um pedestrian path easement through that would lead us towards the back end. Twenty percent to the back of the high school, is that something that the board wants to take and pursue and. Put its attention back to, to see whether or not we can we put some monies together.
My my, before I got to that point, I'd wanna again just revisit it with the folks who live at Chestnut Oaks. The people in Lawrence Farms who are affected by it, whatever Lawrence Farm version that is, on Southwest or.
South.
Um, are are affected by it, um, because whether it costs five thousand or fifty thousand, and they put the number, if it's if it's. If it's not even a a conversation for certain people, doesn't mean that we won't do it, because I do think it actually in the smaller form is a great idea. But I I I think that would opportunity to be heard before we take the leap and start spending money.
I agree, let me just, I I I agree as well, but I also think we should hear from. The four hundred houses, which would then be connected to downtown Chapacqua.
Certainly, that's fair.
We should also hear from the merchants who would now have a ton more people who can come to downtown Chapacqua. Personally, Chestnut, personally, 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 Chestnut Oaks, we have an easement over, so I know some people, I know some people are opposed to it, but but the thing is, is that.
And all the students at the high school.
But I think, yeah, but I do want to have a mess.
Don't.
They want sidewalks that's gonna take them into downtown, so do the four hundred people who will be able to use this trail, okay? And and for the merchants, as much as they'd want the Chestnut Oaks people to have sidewalks to walk into downtown, they also want the other four hundred houses to be able to do that too. And for the kids who can walk to school and with the track team that can use it, so I think, and and taking, taking the property from this private owner is is an option as well.
Let's hear people. Let's hear, let's hear.
I was just aware these numbers people might, it's a lot more than this.
I think you're very strange, those are all, those are all the ones up by the high school and some that are on the other side of one seventeen.
Really weird, I don't know.
So I'd like to hear if you're starting doing.
It's a lot more downtown, it's a lot more.
No, it could be a lot more, but the point, the point is, and 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 Buck, if anybody else has a suggestion about how we connect whether four hundred or five hundred houses to downtown Chapacqua. Then I'm all open to ears, but this is a way to do it, and I think, I think honestly that we're 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 not serving the community at large if we don't if we don't pursue this.
I just love seeing the traffic that's coming out of Chapacqua Crossing now. And it's it's an accident waiting to happen, you have a lot of kids crossing the streets, you've got the track team running on one seventeen, crossing one seventeen. I think if they had a path to run on and we had access.
The track team hasn't contacted us.
The score's a hundred percent in favor.
Oh, no, they have. School, yeah.
The score's a hundred percent in favor.
If we, could you share some of that?
We we met with everybody.
It would be great, they're on one seventeen now, it's so scary over there now.
Yeah, we we could take and revisit again, have a.
But I I don't, I I don't.
That could let kids be able to walk downtown and not have to get in cars and not have to walk up the street, so much better.
I'm sorry.
Plus it's a parking shortage.
What was two, what was two to three million, what was that the estimate for, the construction of what?
The construction.
That was just a rough, rough estimate.
That seems, how how many miles you say?
Of of the trail way.
Of a tra- of a paved trailway over the trunk line, which is what we're now talking about, or.
Or a or.
Well, there was something, there.
We didn't do that much, yeah, we didn't.
Why does that have to be paved?
But wait, it but I wait a minute, let's say, let's, wait a minute.
That's the ADA compliance.
Keep in mind too, but that's a bit EDC.
If it's paved, it's in a lot of wetlands that both.
A trail that would have to. So if we didn't trail it, then we'd.
Maybe a park, we see, right?
It's any EDCs, fresh water.
Totally deranged. I'm sorry.
Time, so so I understand, I mean, this is not a pack on on the ADA, but it I'm confused, if it was a trail in Ghenny up in Hill, it would have to be ADA compliant?
Those are just.
This sounds like this is a, this this number, Bob, this number of three million to do what I think is in public access, what a three mile run.
If if we get grant money.
Okay, so if it's not.
Two and a half mile run?
Anytime there's a grid or a town.
Well, there's also a bridge that is needed.
A bridge and.
Town dollars you're suggesting.
There is a ton of drainage work, if you're gonna put paint, because if you walk, if you walk.
I mean, you say, so right. So what's the cost of versus, what's the cost of versus?
I don't think it's. The county.
Can you walk it?
Yeah, it is really, you know, you cannot.
I'm gonna go with.
You can walk, no, you can walk, but it's money though, it's a really money rush.
I'll take my, hold on, I'll take my dog with you and we'll go do it.
You wanna go?
I'll totally go with you, and if it's frozen, it'll be much easier to walk.
It's money though.
I know.
Yeah, it is.
Um, but it is a lot of wetlands, a lot of wetlands, it's gonna need a bridge.
Well, so.
I've done it.
No, it's like you have to tell.
I've got really good boots.
Yeah.
So so if if we didn't take, whatever the dollars would be, who we get from a grant, if we didn't take that grant, like, we can make it a much smaller.
And it's messy, and you'll be jumping, and there's lots of foam, and dogs will be looking, there's lots of deer.
Trail that did not have to be paved and we could put rock down instead and gravel to make it.
We're just talking about that.
Because I I I want it to be accessible to all, but if you're talking millions of dollars as opposed to six hundred thousand dollars, it's a different conversation.
What? What triggers the thinking? Any, like the percentage of improvement?
Right.
But the grant, what what is that doing?
It depends on what the grant says, whether or not it is, it depends how we're shooting the money.
Right. This is and and using three million dollars.
And then it's gonna be done over time to make sure the pavement.
I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know, that's just one.
Once you have public use walking.
One in Peru's trail would require ADA.
Okay, ADA.
The problem, the concern we have is that in parts of the trail, because of the wetlands, there's gonna be a need to create some kind of a platform, some kind of a structure.
I understand that, but the the difference though is when you use it, I I don't know what the legal standard is for an approved trail, if we made a trail that was five feet wide.
I think.
Don't forget the bridge that goes from the high school over that gorge to the road.
And and if it was a five-foot wide trail, I'm making it up as opposed to a ten-foot wide trail, that would be crush stone as opposed to pavement, that, you know, how much less would that be, I mean, but the answer.
That's not a small.
Well, we talked.
Of course, then you can't, people running across the zone or biking.
We talked about emergency access people, we were concerned last year, we were emergency accessing.
But it's just a place to start, it's just, it's a place to start, over time, we can allocate dollars to.
They have any, they they can get something on there.
You got mounted, right?
Absolutely, mounted, I think.
It's a mountain, it's a mountain. I think you have a lot of things that you guys have discussed.
Why?
Lion, safety, protection.
For that, I think I'd be more inclined to listen to that, just to see what are the dollars that we're talking about.
And you can't talk about it?
I mean, this, I think to throw around three million dollars is a more suitable, but.
Yeah.
Alright, so continue.
Yeah.
Yeah, so how do we have that comfort?
A lot of people, uh, I trade for the marathon there, because it's easy, it's easier than the.
And I think also, I think getting the easiest, easiest, impossible, I mean, we would have to condemn their property.
Yeah, 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 that's true, that's true.
I trained for the marathon.
And is that a road we wanna go down?
I did.
Really?
I'm just saying.
I did, I said it, I.
It's a long time ago.
Never, never years ago.
I'm just being pragmatic about this, so.
He's at I, other than him, he's hated it.
And we did a half.
It's five properties.
So let's, can we get the, we don't, there's.
We are, we are well-heeled properties.
I I understand, but the point is, is that there's five properties and that that section we can do a raised walkway and go on on our property.
So let's have, let's have two conversations, one, start the engagement again, and two, look at there's an alternative in terms of the type of path to, that would impact the cost.
Your.
And I also think. And and I also think if we are serious about it, I think we need to assess the willingness of the owners to share their property, and if we're going down, um,
Yeah, well, I think it's two questions.
the road of eminent domain, that's really where we wanna go.
That's not, but that's, you're saying if you're wanting, that's, but nobody, but nobody's saying that.
No, no, we're saying we can go around them if we want to, still.
We can go around them, we don't need to take their property.
We.
Nobody's saying that.
Their their property ends here, this is the railroad tracks, we own this property.
I'm not talking about Chestnut Oaks, I'm talking.
I'm not talking about Chestnut Oaks, we own all of the wetland property in between the railroad tracks and the properties.
No, okay. So now we be building in the wetlands.
So we can go.
So two.
Very possible, we we will be build, we will need D E C permission.
Yeah, so we need the E D C.
That isn't a wet, people might be used to wet.
Like what's the.
You see, it's approved, Bob, all right.
But it's, but it's it's not, it's not, it's not the ten, it's not the ten million dollar white platform.
Or Bob. A raised platform. Right, 'cause it's not the entire.
It's just going through the wetlands on two little areas, assuming that the homeowners don't wanna give us easements in those two areas. When you guys walk the path, what you'll see is that there's only actually, if there's two houses you can actually see.
Can I say the proposal?
Yeah, it's. The ten million dollars.
The other houses, they can't even see, you can't even see the houses.
I don't know Sabrina's.
But I'll walk it with you, it's actually really fine.
But I'm.
I'm.
I never saw it.
But it is, Sabrina.
Yeah, I know.
Wicked wet.
Bob, what, it it comparing to what the, what you're looking at now with this paved path, if it was something, what's the width of that now, by the way, what's the presumably?
There is no width, it's about four feet.
Generally, I think that was another topic of discussion, if it's gonna be a public aisle like that, I think we're coming up with something like eight feet wide.
Okay, so.
We could just make it five feet.
If you made it eight, if it stayed the same width, if it stayed stayed the same width, but you got rid of the paving.
Eight to ten feet wide. Mm-hmm.
How much dollars, if you can think of that, what is, what are you talking about saving?
Okay, I don't know how long it is, but it would be a savings for asphalt to gravel, you could do that.
Jeremy, what you need to do is we need a formal estimate.
Hold on, hold on.
But 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 is that allowed, though, is that allowed, a gravel bed?
Well, we just brought up, if it's not, if it's, we get gravel.
Um.
Well, we're just, you know, baby steps, so if we could just, yeah, they.
All the bikeways I see, it's half and half, it's 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 gravel on like, up in Duchess County, which are not the old asphalt, the only one, ten, they have gravel is for like the joggers.
Why couldn't be gravel, for the, why couldn't be gravel on the wetlands, keep it impervious, I mean pervious?
Well, we were originally thinking, when we went out to the RFP, we were originally thinking to get the consultant to do two layouts. One, all off the people's properties, which is gonna be more expensive, but no easements, and one on the properties, which would reduce the cost because you don't have the wetlands impacts. But you have to worry about the monies you might have to get to the people for the easements, those are the two scenarios we were thinking, and that's why back then we went out to an RFP to have the consultant come up with those costs.
And the RFP is?
The RFP was, uh, what was the lowest one, about two fifty?
Two.
Two fifty, or two thirty.
I mean, I would imagine, I I would consult with, uh, Ed, I wouldn't think about the RFP again, that was three years ago.
Two, two, this is two seven one.
And the seven one, was it Simpson?
It wasn't, it would, would it be?
Yeah, we we received six responses, and then we we vetted the different qualifications of the consultants and came up with the two that.
It was about two fifty.
So the school district allowed us to go.
Was that three years ago?
Yeah.
Went there be a third choice, though, one is, uh.
So it's from here to here, that we would be, that's a problem for us, we own all the property.
Going on the wetlands, but with gravel, though.
So we can go by.
Like saying, like a paved pathway, but then on the wetlands, we have gravel.
Be.
You know, it's funny you should say that, I said to Rob, they were so positive and so sad, when I read that, I was.
I think we probably.
Maybe just going with gravel, go away, and here.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think, and there's a bitter conversation with the dollars, and maybe what you want perfect to start, but at least has the foundation.
I'm. When I read that, I was.
And I think it's worth having a conversation again with them, because you know what, it's really to the end of it, they were.
Honestly, I just want, I want to get from point A to point B, I don't care what the services.
They've pulled the idea of the bell school kids having a connection to this.
I, that's people, you know.
Alright, so how do we start the next step, and so we can move the ball forward, at least to look at other.
You wanna go to RFP, let me know.
Well, do we need to go out to?
We would have to go out and read that though.
We'll redo it, I would have to redo it.
Okay, so then let's take a look, alright, so let's take a look at the old RFP, see if we can dust it off a little bit.
We have it all set. I just did it for destiny, you know, four, it's something, it's about two eighty, so hopefully they'll come in about two eighty, to three hundred thousand.
Do you share your bar sidewalk?
Two with so great. From the high school to downtown are not.
Yeah, well, it sounds as if you wanna amend the RFP, because you wanna consider.
And you have to take that property.
So this.
The sidewalk.
Is a way, a bad way to make sidewalks, I mean, I.
I'm not just. Yeah, where you wanna scatter down down, it's unwaithable. It's a different service treatment in different ways, so we can, we can circulate here.
Right, and definitely, because you know what, the state is very.
Yeah. Well, we're gonna have to consult with the public.
But no way can walk, I mean, you walk on one seventeen, they.
What type of work, what what's preventing, what's preventing the Girl Scouts, the Boy Scouts, the community from coming and saying, we're gonna help, if we're gonna build that.
We should also.
So wait, people can get, all the way here, all the way downtown.
What about improving that path that goes to ten thousand thousand?
To, to, you know, uh, to 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 help to break.
You wanna have, you wanna have a dirt trail with the only ones?
I'm glad, to, with the.
And we're gonna save the path.
You wanna save the path, you build a.
Well, let's, let's, this this back to all of these donations, you know, to build a, a wood, I don't use, a bridge is a little bold term, but you know, an elevated path.
Yeah.
And one of the.
There is a path, I take it all the time.
No, to build a, a wood, I don't use, bridges is a little bold term, but you know, an elevated path.
Maybe we should improve that path.
Well, you know. It sounds like it's a lot more like that.
Okay.
But you could, people could miss it, you could probably find it, it's scary.
No, it's not a trail in the woods, this is not a trail in the woods, so like, if you were just doing what they do when you go into parks, which is a two foot wide trail, that gets worn down, you come to the wetlands, you build a little boardwalk by putting railroad ties over it.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, but I'm not talking, I'm not talking anything crazy.
If somebody wants to do that, that would be actually cross effective.
And then we could worry about a lot of dollars, yeah, dollars, I don't want to fix it, maybe.
But it's not, and someone could even jog on it most of the time, um.
Yeah.
So the baby steps is the way to go.
Better than the news.
But I think, you know, if it's gonna be some big huge project that's gonna be eight foot wide, you know, then you're really, I mean, I think the three million dollars that's been tossed around here is an unrealistically low number. And we also have.
Why can't it be realistically high enough to spend?
Range is anywhere from three to ten.
No, it's, uh, it's what the actual cost is gonna be, I mean, you're gonna have to build a bridge over the gorge to get people over to Chapua Crossing.
Yeah.
Yeah, the bridge is needed, there is no way to cross that.
Well, even even if it's two million or three million, the bottom line is, may not need to be paved, then maybe we run with.
No, you need it.
That's about a whole.
It's seven million.
Right, let's try it with this cost.
But you're gonna have to build a bridge.
We're gonna have to build.
Either way.
Well, then let's.
But so the RFP is to have a design firm come in and give us a perspective on what the, what different options would be?
We broke it down in the many areas, preliminary, preliminary, conceptual, preliminary, preview by the town board.
Does that come with cost?
Well, we can, we can redo the RFP, we can do gravel, we can.
Yeah, preliminary, but it is, it has basically preliminary design, then it has the design in it, and then construction inspection, and the, basically the town board can pick and choose which one they want the consultant to be.
I can answer your question.
Like Jill said, just because it came in at two fifty, you don't have them do double two fifty, have them do the conceptual, and each one has a different task with a different cost.
But. Yeah.
So just have them do the first one, present the awards, see if they like it.
So this was, yeah, so we broke it down, and then there's a cost to each one of these things, and then you decide the twenty one.
We broke it down in a certain sense, so it could be unpaid, it could be paid, it could be combination.
I I just, what I just seen to us.
Absolutely.
Oh, two, there's two plans, okay, yeah, the, I guess that's what I'm saying, like, it sounds like we've got a whole range of different options, from the, the Cadillac paved with strike down the middle and it's for bikes and, you know, ducking feathers,
Oh. Yes.
Easements, no easements. Right.
Right.
One of them is the flexible.
To the, you know, Horse Scout, that car.
Yeah.
That was originally.
I've done the same for, um.
We could do the cars in string, you know.
But I think that there's certain hurdles and how to pay for it, I mean, sort of a separation. Right, well, let's see what our, our.
We'll get to the cost first.
Alright, so what we got, let's move on.
Okay, great, alright, next, one more.
Okay, thanks, Bob.
Alright, where are we?
She wanna.
Thank you very much, yeah.
We need, I'll, I'll, I'll just save a second.
Circulate the RFP to the board, see if you're okay, before we go on.
Yeah, okay. Yes.
Yes, we look at the options.
And we'll let the council look at it as well.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby.
Wait, wait, you're on sidewalks.
It's supposed to be.
Um, yeah, let's just do sidewalks, and then we'll go to, uh, the chicken license fee, we'll see.
No, it.
Millwood sidewalks, um, Bob circulated the, um, the fifty percent plans, any comments, or actually had some, uh, technical comments that he forwarded to Bob earlier today, so those will be incorporated?
Basically, I want to get comments from anyone and everybody.
Can I, can I have a separate meeting with you where we can look at the pictures?
Absolutely.
And you can make sure that I understand all this, because I have some questions based on it as it stands today, but I don't wanna misread those tiny drawings.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay, but I'm sorry, finish what you're saying, we have to stop interrupting people, it's like, everyone says two sentences and gets interrupted.
Yeah.
Soon as we.
Well, it should be limited, it should be limited, you gotta talk fast.
I wanted to finish what you were saying, I wanted to hear what you were saying.
You gotta talk fast.
Do you want me to just go to the, real quick?
Please. Mm-hmm.
Uh, basically, as you know, we got a multimodal grant on this five hundred thousand matching years ago, uh, and I do call them up all the time, and I always ask Mrs. Holstoffle, I says, how long is this money good for? She says, as long as ever, because I don't wanna, I don't wanna come here one day and say, gee, we don't have the money anymore, so we do have a lot of time on the money, it doesn't mean we should take all the time. But anyway, uh, we just got the fifty percent submitted from N B five, I hope everyone has his full plans in mind, just somebody to be referencing.
Maybe just take first.
Can I go make coffee?
You wanna talk about something else while she's doing that?
Yeah, but Kira make coffees and Sabrina's gonna talk to you all about the chicken fees.
Chicken fees, so you have before you today a request to amend the chicken fee, amend the fee schedule, the town fee schedule
Thank you, by the way.
We'll check out.
to include a twenty five dollar chicken license fee, that would be issued by the town clerk's office for anyone interested in having chickens.
Why is the word chicken license?
Can I just cut you off one second, I'm sorry, please, I just wanna say, well, the reason we're talking about this right now and why we, is because Thursday night we have the presentation for the chickens, and what we wanna have after presentation is all the things that people would need if they wanna get a permit, including the fees, I'm just giving a teeny bit of background information, thank you.
Okay. Yes. So we have taken the chicken law and developed an internal management process between the town clerk's office and the building department in order to process chickens on somebody's property.
Don't process them.
Oh, that's.
Don't process the chicken.
And in, in, process the keeping, the keeping of chickens.
Yeah, just, try to set words.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes. Um, if there will be an application available in the town clerk's office, the application, um, will be required to be filled out. They will then be provided a building permit application to take to the building department. They will apply for a building permit, um, in most instances, we are assuming that a chicken coop would be less than one thousand square feet, and therefore the building permit fee would be one hundred dollars. The one hundred dollar fee will provide, um, and the application will provide the building department with that, with information as to the location of the chicken coop and its associated enclosure on the property. We will conduct one inspection to determine that everything they tell us is true and that there is a safe and healthy environment for the resident chickens. We will then issue a certificate of compliance to the property owner that says that they can house chickens in their coop and enclosure. They will take the certificate of compliance and return back to the town clerk's office, whereby the town clerk will issue a chicken license for the number of chickens that they're wishing and allowed to have on their property. So this will all go into effect as soon as you modify the town's fee schedule to accept a twenty five dollar chicken license fee, before you speak. In addition, because we we do not want to seem as if we're trying to give people who already have chickens a hard time, and we want them to come in and get, obtain licensure, we are not going to charge, we're recommending that you create a moratorium or a forgiveness program for a year, whereby they will not be charged as built, building fees for their chicken coop. So we're asking that you establish that tonight along with a change to the fee schedule.
Let me ask you a quick question, how about the people who are renting chickens and may want to rent, you can rent chickens for like, the summer, and then you give them back in the winter.
I love it.
Still need to have a license.
No, 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 I know.
But in terms of the building, a lot of them come with a coop, that you're not building, so would there be, are we still charging them the building fee?
Yeah. That's okay. If we still need an inspector, we still need an application and an, and an inspector to go out and verify the distances as presented on the matching that is provided to the office,
Okay.
Remember the same, no, no, do it.
Mm-hmm.
as well as that the proper safety is put into place for safety.
That's yours.
On this one, yes.
Here, here's my little, little problem with it, though, if somebody goes out and goes on Amazon and buys a three hundred dollar chicken coop, that's prefabricated.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Now they have to spend twenty five dollars for the vice for the permit, they gotta spend a hundred dollars for the, uh, building permit,
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
and then they gotta spend fifty dollars, for the fifty for the, uh, certificate of, uh, completion, so that's one seventy five. Is that, is that, is that sound, I mean.
The hundred dollars covers the.
It seems like it's a lot of money.
Does not cover the certificate of.
Maybe it's not, I don't know.
It's a little extreme for public.
So we're, you're getting a three hundred dollar chicken coop squawking a hundred seventy five hours and, uh, and, uh.
No.
But it's a one time fee.
It's a, it's a.
I don't.
We're running a little behind, I'm sorry.
But it's a one time fee, right?
It is a one time fee.
I I don't think it's that much, 'cause you wanna make sure the biggest, our biggest issue is, we wanna make sure the coops are within the appropriate distances from neighbors, et cetera, so we need that to.
That's a big issue, you wanna make sure.
I'm, I'm okay, I I just wanna make it clear that those are the fees, because what's gonna happen is, what I don't wanna happen is, on Thursday or Friday, is people are up in arms, because it's not twenty five dollars, it's it's a hundred and seventy five.
It's not, I'm here to tell you that in order to.
It's a hundred and twenty five dollars.
It's a hundred and seventy five dollars, in in my office.
Twenty five dollars for the two, to get a hundred dollars for the building.
Fifty dollars for the completion, uh, for the completion.
And fifty dollars for.
Why do you want my, is there an additional understanding?
Because in in under the building department.
But what if they're not building it, what if they're renting it?
It is still needs to be located on the site, we do this, there's, people have sheds delivered to them all the time.
That's crazy. And you need a CO.
And then you need a CO.
But then we can weigh the fifty dollars.
This is, this is the town process, if you guys want to change that process, it is within your purview, I'm making you aware of what the process currently is.
I think we should keep it along with the process that we use for sheds and anything else, I, I think that's right, it's a one time fee, the one seventy five.
And so it's twenty five dollars.
Or two fifty.
What if somebody rents it every year, it's still one time?
One time.
Yeah, it's one time.
They're coming back with a coop every year, they're taking it away and bringing it back.
Right.
As long as they put it in the same place they go.
Because that's part of the deal.
Then we, should we, should we, should we?
They don't go over a year.
Yeah, they can't go beyond a year, they have to do whatever you, yeah, yeah.
They have to be on a year, they have to do a new permission.
But that's only twenty five, though.
No, the whole thing is. Now you have to do the whole thing.
Well, maybe you keep the coop when you rent them, I'm not sure how that works, do you rent a coop also, I don't know, you probably could.
I don't know.
Oh, the.
You have a, maybe you like the coop, you could buy one too.
Just rent the chickens, keep the coop.
You know what, let's put it in a place and let's see how many people squawk.
Golden eggs go to the town.
What, John?
Any golden eggs go to the town.
I got it, okay. Alright, so we're good, um, so we have a presentation tomorrow night, we got, so we know a cooperative coming down, six K.
So you need to change time.
Yeah, we can.
Of course.
Okay.
Anything you would want to know about that fair fault, what we present, Thursday, like, no, no, Thursday, sorry, Thursday.
Have a good night, everybody, Thursday.
About.
I see, I can handle that, but it's playing worse.
I say what tomorrow, I have Thursday, sorry, no, not down, sorry, yeah, that's, that's, that's a lovely, lovely present, what do you think?
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's true, that doesn't make us.
How romantic, right?
You're the right person.
Or track animals.
Right.
Okay.
Do you wanna go, or?
Terry was just saying that sheds don't, I forget.
Yeah, right, good, Bob, alright, we're back, you have copies?
Oh, first of all, first of all, I apologize for the sloppiness of the copies, but those are cheat sheets I put on, so when I'm speaking, I kinda look at them a quick.
Alright, good follow.
Good hour age.
Good hour age.
Well, I would just like also just amend Max's capacity, so.
Thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Alright.
Uh, real quick, uh, I'm gonna start on C P O one, and that's pretty much the most subtle proportion of the project.
Okay. I'm sorry, which is C P O one?
Which is C P O one?
Yeah, C P O one, it's on the drawing number, all the way in the bottom right.
The color copy.
Oh, got it, O one, construction plans, O one.
I see, I see. I say C P O one, got it, C P O one.
Oh, got it.
Everyone pass it.
Got it, yes, okay.
Uh, basically, it starts, we're picking up where the old one left off, at the southerly entrance into the Chico's parking lot, and we're gonna be heading west, about four hundred feet, but they're gonna be coming around the intersection where it intersects with Solma River Road. Uh, if you notice, that's where we're gonna relocate the crosswalk, have you seen the crosswalk going east and west? Because the present location of that crosswalk is really in a dangerous situation, and when I mentioned it to State D O T, they recommended to be moved southerly, closer towards the intersection. Anyway, we're going up along, uh, pretty much Santa Marlow's property, he's the owner of two thirty Solma River Road.
Got it.
And we're gonna hit and tie into the existing sidewalk that was put in for Spaccarelli's several years ago, there was no reason to put new sidewalk there. Uh, and then we're gonna pick up the sidewalk again on the northerly side, which is pretty much Millwood Town Plaza, that's on sheet drawing number C P O two. And that's by station pretty much twenty eight hundred, does everyone see that, on C P O two, it's where the most northern crosswalk is.
Mm-hmm.
And then we, and then we continue another approximately three hundred twenty feet up. We felt to stay on the right hand side or the east side of the roadway, because if we were gonna go on the west side, we'd, we'd have to cut into some of the rock formations there and try to eliminate and save some cost, because we only budgeted one point two three for this project. And then what we did was, we went up to pretty much where the Con Ed property, property is, that's on sheet drawing number C P O three. That's the most normally terminus of a project.
Okay.
Is everyone on that sheet?
Yeah, it's the, um, bus stop on the western side.
Yeah.
Well, I'm first of that, but I just wanted to explain the whole deal.
Okay.
And then what we did, we figured we'd stop there, because if in the future, the town board wishes to extend any more sidewalks, we'd recommend it possibly be on the west side.
Mm-hmm. We flip over, right.
And just for anyone's information, from there up to Hidden Hollow Lane, is approximately twenty five hundred linear feet.
Mm-hmm.
So, at the, at the, at the course of this sidewalk project, uh, rough estimate, that's about one, one point five mil, that could be maybe another phase, if that town board wants to grab. So that's why we stopped it there, and possibly we can get another crosswalk. On the west side of the project, we started at the southerly entrance into the Millwood Park, and we're extending all the way down, because that was one of the first projects I worked on in like nineteen ninety three, and that sidewalk's been running about twenty five years, reaching the end of its usefulness, and people go out there and see it's in pretty bad shape, it doesn't meet ADA, accessibility in any way, shape or form, a lot of the bricks are coming up, uh, there's an old wood tower retaining wall right in front of Millwood Park, we're gonna replace in kind, so that's what we're doing. And that goes all the way down to the old Enneywood Road entrance, which is just north of, uh, the Shell Station.
Bob, just, just for, I mean.
That's just the limits.
Alan knows also, the Millwood Western Advisory Board, they were, they were concerned that, you know, why are we replacing current sidewalk instead of doing, you know, using that money to build brand new sidewalks? But you're saying we have to do it, because it's, I just wanna make it clear, we have to do it, because it's not ADA, it's probably.
Right, it's ADA.
Right, and it is in pretty bad shape, I took some pictures, if you wanna circulate the pictures, it's in pretty bad shape, the sidewalk's cracking, if you wanna circulate from the members of the board.
They, they're all coming down.
Where were the sidewalks that they wanted to relocate?
So, it's ADA in order to be wider, we're not.
We're just like, they're like, they're like.
It's ADA in order to be wider, we're not touching like the fence that's there, right?
We met, Sabrina Jill and I had met with the OT
Mm-hmm.
months and months ago. And we told them, look, this is a project that we have to do, we'd like to do, it's in existing condition. They actually worked with us quite a bit. They didn't allow us, they didn't make us use the snow shelves throughout the whole project.
Mm-hmm.
They just made this. We told them we can only really get takings from Santa Marrow.
Mm-hmm.
Every one of the properties, we reduce the zoning, the frontage, it'd be a complete nightmare, we'd never get anything. So they allowed us just to put the snow shelf on Santa Marrow. And we have another RFP that we just got, and we awarded you guys just a few weeks back
Mm-hmm.
to Beckman Appraisals, as a matter of fact, he sent a letter to Mr. Santa Marrow to get an acquisition from their property to keep this project moving forward. So we're gonna actually have land takings on Santa Marrow's property to put the full width snow shelf, which is always five feet minimum, plus the shoulder, plus the sidewalk.
Right.
Which amounts to twelve feet. All the other areas, they'll let us work with the confines of just a regular two-foot per, uh, two-foot shoulder
Yeah.
and just a five-foot sidewalk.
But that's because we're replacing an existing sidewalk.
That is correct, so they really gave us a big break, right, they're the DOT, and they're quite difficult to work with sometimes.
So I sent you a note saying if we could go over these drawings quietly, because I have some questions about certain aspects of this.
That's fine.
Um, and I'm happy to, like, I, part of me thinks like in Millwood, you know, on the way that those sidewalks are particularly used, little bricks for the snow shelf, it might be better just to score concrete.
That's what they said stamped concrete instead, I mean, you wouldn't have these bricks coming up.
And save some money and maybe extend the sidewalks.
Uh, stamped concrete, you can, you can use a stamped asphalt, it'd probably save some money, if you're looking to save some money.
No, I'm not looking, I'm looking for, it's more just.
Because the, is the brick paper, is the brick paper.
Because even.
It costs the.
No, I understand, but yeah, they come up, and already, if you, even if you look at the relatively new sidewalks that go from one twenty down to one hundred. You know, they're already cracking and those brick things are.
The best, the best, the Cadillac of everything, what I got from the County Planner Department, is really using the brick papers like we're using here, set on asphalt, on floors of concrete.
Yeah.
It's never gonna go anywhere.
Yeah.
Um, I've seen it up in Poughkeepsie, I drive fifty-five all the time.
That's where we put the crosswalk. That's not what's being proposed here, I don't think.
No, no, no.
This is just in sand.
That's a lot more, years ago, they used to put it on sand to save costs. Doesn't work.
It doesn't work.
It heaves, it gets frosty, and it comes up. And the other type they use is the stamping. They just spent about twenty-five million dollars up on Poughkeepsie on Route fifty-five, I drive it every day, I live up there. Jerry can attest to it as well, more shell. They just put the stamped concrete asphalt there. It's coming up already.
Yeah, it's terrible.
It's only been there not even a year.
Doesn't last.
Does not last.
All I know is those sidewalks that are on the um northern side of Station Place, if you actually walk it, I mean, they're not even eight years old, I don't think, maybe they're just about eight years old.
Uh, we did this one out here first in ninety-three, and the other ones we did back then in two phases, phase one and phase two, probably
It's in my lifetime.
sixty-seven.
It's my lifetime.
Are those also in sand, the ones that I was referring to?
Home, everything we do out there is in concrete.
It's twenty years.
I don't know.
Concrete, it's all on concrete.
But it's, it's just not holding as well as it should then.
What's a useful life though, a useful life of a roadway, any systems about twenty years.
We'll just see, but I've got, and I've got some other questions related to the overall, like what happens at the intersection of one hundred and Station Place, in front of the Chico's. I see there's notes on here that talk about see signage instructions, blah blah blah. But I haven't seen those, I'm sorry.
I know you wanted an area for a clock in the future.
Or something.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's on the, that's on the, the corner, though.
That's, uh, that's on the corner.
But I don't see footings, but I know it might be a different drawing.
That's something we can discuss, but you know, it's gonna be problematic, because if the state's gonna be taking all that property, and we wanna go put a clock here.
Well, that's why I just, I don't wanna debate it here, I figured you'll explain it to me, you've got your quiet ways, you can manage me.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, so we just wanna keep it moving, because we uh.
So I sent you a email, maybe you can just let me.
Oh, thank you, Bob.
Alright, thanks, Bob, appreciate it.
Thank you, Bob.
Nice to see you. Okay, what's next?
Move right along.
Uh, proposed legislation, when's the age of the purchase tobacco products, did you need that for twenty-one? It had a revised.
So Ivy had some suggestions, she pointed out directly that in the um title of the legislation, we talked about tobacco, but not liquid nicotine, um, or electronic cigarettes, which is one of the big, you know, points of the legislation, so we incorporated that change and also incorporated some language about policy, because in the very front of the statute, you talk about your legislative findings and why you're doing this, so I added a B that talks about why it's important to deal with electronic cigarettes and nicotine delivery products.
Didn't we talk about the vaping, I mean, that's, the electronic cigarettes is consistent.
Exactly. And I, actually, I passed out, so you have.
There's nothing wrong with saying it also though.
Yeah.
What's up?
I'm just saying, we, we mentioned vaping products, which is electronic cigarettes, but it's good to mention it anyway.
Yeah. Right.
I'm just saying, there's no downside.
Yeah, yeah.
We can add that, this is a.
Okay, got it.
We wanted, I wanted to get this a little bit closer to a diversion that would be rolled out for your public hearing, and then even after that, we can continue to obviously make changes and improvements, so vaping can definitely be something that we add right up front in the legislative purpose section. I handed out earlier some materials, some articles from the CDC that talk about uh statistics in terms of vaping, electronic cigarettes, and, 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 and I know some board members here dedicated time to that issue as well. So, um, that's the change in, uh, one, uh, section one. Some editorial changes to clean up in, some language in one hundred dash three. In the um let's just see something else. In one hundred, well, we talked about provisions in the signage. There's actually a, a New York State statute, uh, public health law, that establishments already follow with respect to signage and other issues. So there, I've just made the language consistent, so that if a store, a store should already have this signage up, the only thing they have to do is change eighteen to twenty-one, they don't have to come up with new signage. Other than that, I took out some language in one hundred five, which talked about. Yeah, because the, the only reason it was in there was the idea that, um, the signage might be a continuing violation, but that really to me is not an issue, a reason enough to have language in here, that when I first read it anyway, I thought it was, I was puzzled by it. Because if somebody, if a, if a store, an establishment sells a product to somebody who's underage, that's a violation. It's not a continuing violation, it happened, it's a violation, we don't measure it in front days.
Not on condoms.
So to, to have that language in there only for the signage, uh, I, I apologize to take it out. So that's, that's it, uh, uh, you would um schedule this for a public hearing, and we go next door for uh your meeting.
What if that, what if that, somebody brought up, um, I think it was at that, um, forum that they had, the legal, uh, the um
The policies?
Uh, United for Youth.
Mm-hmm.
Um that I, I think, like, uh, the stores that sell the vaping products are allowed to actually like s- place them by the candy. Like nowadays with cigarettes, they have to be behind the counter. But I don't think, I don't think this thing.
All the vaping products I've seen at every store in Newcastle where nicotine is sold is behind the counter.
Right, but there's no law that requires it.
In the public, New York State Public Health Law talks about this, it talks about where you can put the products.
Do they, okay.
And if, yeah, I can't tell you, I'm, I'm power phrasing, but the idea is it's um behind the counter, it's a controlled space. It's not just out, you know.
They have to ask the man to go get it for them.
Well, they would, they would, somebody did say otherwise, but I don't know if they necessarily talk about New York.
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't remember either, I mean, I remember the visual, but I don't, I don't recall if it was in the theater or in the house.
They may have just been talking about it in general. Right, it was, it was, it was on the presentation, but it, every state's different, so they may have just been talking in general, I mean, what they, part of the goal was talking about how
Yeah.
what the cigarette companies are doing is they're following the same playbook that they did with cigarettes forty years ago, when it was like Joe Camel in his school to smoke, and they're trying to do the same thing with vaping now by putting it next to the candy and.
They make it all candy flavored, it's like an extension of.
Exactly, right. So that was a point they were trying to make too, about, you know.
Candy on it, basically.
Because that is how they're marketing it, and it's the same companies behind these things. Um, which is scary. Max, right, you can attest to it, right? I'm being serious, I'm not even joking with you now, you're a high school student.
Yeah. Yeah, I've actually been kind of biting my tongue, this is something I really, like, I'm, am I like the only high school student will say this? I agree, there really is way too much in our school, like I see kids doing it out of the open, if you see, you even see them, it's, don't really care, I've personally never touched it, I don't do anything like that.
Of course.
But.
No, I'm seeing, turn it to the camera.
We have no doubt.
No, but I am, I am being serious, and I do think it really is a problem.
It is, it's all over the high school.
And like, the thing is, like, even the kids I talk to, like, yeah, we do know it's bad for us, we know it's kinda killing us, but it's like too addicted to don't really care, it's I also know that like, where, wherever they shop for it, like, I don't remember where it was. But like, they're like, they never asked to see any ID, they can just walk in, buy.
In Newca- in Newcastle?
It's, yeah, it's like, I, I actually think I've never been there, they say it's the one that's like near, uh, like near, uh, Little Thai Kitchen. Not Little Thai Kitchen, uh, the kebab, Little Kebab Station, I don't remember that.
Oh, Mount Kisco.
Yeah, Mount Kisco.
The Mount Kisco Smoke Shop, yeah, yeah, I think it's one of those, it's there.
Yeah, like, they, like, they said they walk in, he'll never ask.
Well, Mount Kisco's gonna be aware of that now.
Right.
Yes, you are.
Oh, you didn't hear that one from, you didn't hear that one from me.
Don't worry.
No, no.
You can also buy it on, uh, online, and, and get in, you know, okay.
Got it. Let's just.
No, it's a problem, it's a, it's a big problem, it is. And uh.
It's a quite a problem.
Yeah.
Alright.
The problem is, is that it's, it's addictive, and people don't realize, like Max, you wooed it to, it's addictive.
Yeah.
And people don't realize it's addictive.
It's nicotine.
Well, the percentage of nicotine delivery on these things is so much higher than regular cigarettes, and there's not a chance, kids, on that.
Exactly. Right, and it's a nicotine delivery system, I mean, that's what this is, you can call what you want, it's a nicotine delivery system. It's a, it's a high, it's a, it's an electronic version of it.
Okay.
Alright.
So, um so next one I feel a little funny about, because we're gonna be talking about it on March sixth. But the chief has put in for two from these conferences, and I, I have to chuckle, because we never have any out-of-state travel, and they're, they're both out of state.
You're proving my point, John.
So, one, let's start with Rhode Island first, because that one's easier. Um, it's uh twelve hundred dollars, eight hundred of which is being refunded to us by, uh, the Rhode Island State Department of Transportation. Um, they're they're reimbursing that in the New York State Child Passenger Safety Grant is, uh, is chipping in, so that out-of-town travel for Chief Ferry and Officer Galanick is going to be four hundred dollars, so.
It's four hundred dollars.
That's a good one. Next one, not so much. Um, the next one is, uh, Chief's Ferry request to, uh, attend the twenty-eighteen LifeSaver National Conference on Highway Safety Priorities. Um, it's approximately three thousand dollars, I, the chief has been asked to speak. Um, he told me that, uh.
He's gonna ask to speak?
Yes.
Because of the distracted driving.
It's the part of the distracted driving.
There's no benefit to, to him or the town to, uh
Right.
have him speak? You are already asked.
Yeah. We, wouldn't as a speaker, we typically pay.
You can, you can always ask, you can always ask.
No, 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 he, he can, and he said, he may be, they may be able to provide some limited financial assistance, I can complete the application form. The town was provided assistance in the past, and priority is given, being given to first-time applicants. I will apply, but I would appreciate the board approval as quickly as possible, since we need to schedule transportation while we can still get it at the cheapest rate.
What day, when, what is it?
April twenty-first.
Where?
Virginia.
San Antonio, Texas.
Oh, Texas.
All, all, all I say is, I mean, putting aside the policy for a second, as far as the expenditure, the benefit of having the chief speak at these things is other communities are actually looking to us as a model, he's going there to speak about it. And the truth is, the texting is a problem, and it doesn't leave our borders, I mean, it's, it's a problem everywhere.
No, I don't think I'm disputing that whatsoever, just if, if, if they can fund part of it, why not ask?
I understand what you're saying.
No, 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 absolutely.
That's, that's the issue.
But there's a benefit to us to have them speak at these other towns, because it's, it's a problem when you drive into another town just like it is here, I mean, it's a problem everywhere.
So, um. And, and, are we, I mean, are we supposed to be paying for meals?
So, I mean, this is, this is the issue that I, this is the issue that I wanna talk about, because when town employees travel out of town, whether it's out of state or in state, there are commonly accepted practices um that the DSA on federal level puts forward in terms of what they can spend on lodging and meals. Um, and all federal employees follow those guidelines, and all state employees follow those guidelines. And I think that we should just be carrying them forward here on a local level and making every effort to adhere to those here. Um, and, you know, there are certainly instances when you're not gonna be able to find those rates at hotels that you're staying at, um, but I think that we ought to be attempting to.
I'll be curious only to know what other towns do, because I'm not saying it's a bad idea, but at the same time, I mean, you know, unlike the federal government, the state government, where they have thousands of employees, and they're not gonna the town councils or state governments are not gonna approve every single expenditure and a resolution like we do. You know, we don't get that many of these, I mean, how many do we get a year?
I have to list, three, so Sabrina's in the two, two, the.
You know, so. It's not, but.
Yeah, no, but I think it's, I mean, I think it's, if, if the state has certain guidelines about what you should spend on a hotel, and what you should. What your allowance is for meals.
Because there's thousands of employees.
Also, you just don't think New York State is like, should be like. But it, but it, it doesn't matter, it's a principle, it's how you treat these money.
But it doesn't matter, but we can, we can, it's, it's really allows us to take advantage
Well, we, we just.
of what the feds have, have gone out and, and negotiated on our behalf.
I understand it, but all I'm, all I'm, all I'm saying is though that, well, I agree, if we get better rates, it's a hundred percent, I agree, all I'm saying is that
So.
Well, we do ask the government rates. So we. But we can, it is a little expensive, three thousand dollars for three days. It is a allowance.
Okay. Okay, so the, so, all I'm gonna suggest to the board is that the twenty-two hundred dollars that he's budgeted for this was something that was discussed as a line item during budget time. No, 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 so all, all, all I'm, all I'm suggesting is that if we're going to have a change in policy, that we should just think about the change of policy in terms of timing and what people have been, have asked for and have had expenditures approved based upon their presentations to the board during budget time.
Ed, do you know what other towns do?
Other, I, I have started to do research, I have New Rochelle and Mammarineck, and neither one of them, I mean, New Rochelle's.
They don't follow the government rates?
No. No, they don't.
I mean, New York City certainly does.
No, look, they're all.
No, they don't.
But the thing is, I mean, the thing is, with New York City, I'm not, I'm, I don't know the answer, but with New York City, if an employee wants to do something, they probably just have to get their supervisor to sign off, and then they're done. With us, we're doing a, a resolution.
Yeah, no, they certainly don't.
But the town council's not, but the town council's not approving it.
The, the process that you go through is much, much more rigorous in terms of the amount of documentation and the justifications that you have to provide to be able to.
But the town council's not approving it, I'm saying, I mean, that's not.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna put some numbers to, together, actually, at tomorrow's, uh, town board meeting, we're just gonna go through and ask people. Because we have a very small world. Um, these are unusual, that the chief is being asked to speak, it's something that just came out, or distracted driving, and Sabrina does go to the APA conferences every other year. Um, and because we do acknowledge that they're more expensive than a, just a traditional conference would be, because they alternate out, out of town versus in town. Um, every other year, when she goes to the in-town, she doesn't budget for it, and so that's the way we've sort of worked it out with her, because she needs it for her to maintain her professional license.
A hundred percent, I, I agree with the opportunity to take advantage of professional development. And, and for the chief to be able to speak, I agree with you that that's advantageous for our town and for, for the greater good. I just think that our town ought to be able to control costs on the same, in the same way that the state and the feds do. And that, you know, we owe that to the taxpayers in this town as.
So I think we should look into it though, because the difference is between staying, you know,
I'm, I'm happy to look.
I, we don't know here, but I mean, if he's going and saying the Ritz Carlton, we don't wanna, I'm not saying he is, but my point is, we don't wanna necessarily be funding that, we wanna put some sort of guidelines perhaps around.
Okay, so it's, it's two of them traveling to San Antonio, it's airfare plus hotel for the twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and meals for two people for three thousand dollars, so I just, I, I don't think anybody's thinking of this.
Guess with certain, it's still a little confused, if he's just going to speak, why three days?
No, no, I'm not saying they are.
You know, who's some of.
I don't, I don't know if it's Ritz Carlton, it didn't, San Antonio.
It's, it's, it's.
So he wants to attend the whole conference. My point is that you don't want us to be spending five hundred dollars a night in a hotel, maybe we should have some guidelines around, not that they are.
No, I, I completely agree.
I'm just saying, maybe, to Ivy's point, maybe we should put some guidelines around it.
But, and, and there, and there are guidelines, so we, yeah, yeah.
Okay, it's alright.
And he's asking for dollars.
I mean, I, I have no problem with, what I'm saying is that we, we, we do some.
Because it's been budgeted, so you've already approved.
No, 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 he's asking, he's gonna just apply.
Yeah. Yes.
Well, the thing is, we, I don't disagree, I'm just saying, we, we do approve it on a case-by-case basis.
So let's put this on the agenda and do it.
Okay, okay.
But.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be on the sixth.
We're just, you know. And it's not like the federal government doesn't waste money, let me destroy that out there, and the state too, but in this case, they may be good.
Yeah.
I mean.
It's not the state's rates, it's, it's the feds' rates, I mean, there are literally, like, there are hundreds of thousands of people traveling tonight
I don't know.
that are following these guidelines. And so I think, you know, if everybody else can spend sixty dollars a day on food, our town employees ought to be able to spend the same amount that federal and state employees spend.
Okay, I, you're, you're assuming that they're not, and I'm just, I don't know if that's true.
Well, the request was for.
Oh, for airfare, hotel, and food, not food being three thousand dollars.
Sabrina's request was for a hundred dollars a day for food while she was on her trip.
But we don't, but we don't.
For a hundred dollars a day, you'd have.
Alright. It's a lot.
It is a lot.
It's, this isn't a big issue, I don't need to make this an issue, it's just.
No, no, it's, uh, I'm not. You're right, you're right about a hundred thousand, I was just saying that we just, it's on a case-by-case basis.
Put it on, you can, you can.
Do you have, is there something that you've sent or recommended rates for traveling, so we can appreciate?
And Ed, can you just have someone look into what other towns do?
And Ed, can you just have someone look into what other towns do? I know you're doing that now, but
Yeah, I'm doing that. But I already, I already sent it out, so I'll be there.
Okay.
Um okay, expanded scope of the downtown infrastructure project. This was just a a bit of a addendum from last um week's discussion. We talked about the fact that we were gonna look into restoring the curving. Um Ivy raised a question as to whether or not the curving included installation and labor. It does. However, there were other things that we took out in addition to the curving. So the curving was ninety thousand dollars, but there was also pavement that we cut back on. And that's um that needed to be added. So there was also milling and filling that went along with it. So it's not ninety, it's closer to one eighty that we're talking about putting back in. And again, we will make those decisions on a case-by-case basis, but with that, with the
Why do I have to do a lot for the curving? I thought, I'm misunderstanding. I thought the plan was just to add the curving so that in the event that we wanted to and the monies were there, we could
Right, but ju- just so that you know. So the the question was asked, was that the only thing that was removed in in conjunction with the curving? And the answer is, is that there was also additional paving that was gonna be done. If it turns out that we don't have the money for the paving, we won't. We'll just patch it along the way.
Alright.
But we have the curving there anyway.
My question to you is this. So this is definitely this northern end of the run. We also took
Not just, yes, it's all eleven areas. It's the curving in all eleven areas, plus
You too.
Well, here Oh, because maybe I misread the maths.
It's not the actual
I thought it was from, I'm sorry, I, that could have just been me. Um
No, so it's
So it's all of the stuff, the sidewalks up here, the sidewalks going up
And ev- everything that we took out. Everything that we took out, in addition to the area along Lower um Island Place
Mm-hmm.
from Lower King to where the state stopped
Mm-hmm.
re- uh replacing the sidewalk along there and the two islands.
Which is in the garbage.
Um those are the pictures I showed you. You could see like where the state, you know, stopped like at half an island and a little bit. That sidewalk is completely disintegrated. So we would like to be able to put granite curbing back there. It is our intention to take it. We do the sidewalk at some point, but if we're gonna pave, we'll
So this number here, so how did
Really?
So I thought
The ninety, yes.
One, one ninety, but I thought when we reduce the scope of work in the streetscape project
Yeah, it was one point one, but then we took a lot of things out. Was it one point one?
No, it was, it was more than that.
No.
No, it was a bad, it was a bad one.
Yeah, one point one.
It was one point six. Doesn't matter.
Which was, which was the question, which was?
It's on the website.
So I I guess to a certain extent, I thought a large part of that was actually reducing the sidewalks, reducing this, reducing that. And I didn't really, it was only a hundred ninety thousand?
No, no, no. So that is a, is a
No, that's
I remember, it was like two fifty-five.
It's a, it's a, it's a
It's a
It's a certain extent. This this is just for the curbing, so that if we wanna actually put the sidewalks in at some point, we can.
Not the sidewalks.
Not the sidewalks.
Oh, we can.
If you don't do it now, you run the risk of ripping things up later. So you might as well put it now, so whether or not you want it here or two years, three years.
I have no problem putting the curbing in, but
And we have to order it now.
Yeah, so
That that was the big deal.
Different, different, you're thinking of the complete project as opposed to a pieces to allow the project.
Granted.
Okay.
Right, and we have to order it in advance.
Right. So you're you're right, the sidewalk is much more than that, but this will allow, this will give us the option to do it there.
Down the line.
Right.
Okay, okay, thank you. Alright. Alright, um
And social point for the paving, because we are gonna be paving the other side of the curtain.
Okay, we ready to go into town board meeting?
Yep.
Okay.
I moved to a journey.
Forty, forty minutes, not too bad, actually. Seriously. Well, favor, aye.